Good evening. I'd like to call the administrative meeting of the zoning commission at 7:02 PM on November 21st. We have Commissioner Forrester sitting in for Stephanie Phillips and Commissioner Ann Baker for the vacant seat that was done. Could I have a motion? Have a motion to take it?
Off the table?
Yep.
Yeah, just definitely table. I'll make a motion to take all three petitions for 795 James Farm Road off the table.
Commissioner Fuller, would you like to read all three?
Yeah, it's 795, I don't have any agenda in front of me, but I know it's 795 James Farm Road, modified petition of 500 North Avenue LLC to amend the zoning regulations to create a new section, Section 28, entitled "The Joy Ridge Housing Opportunity Development Zone in an RS1 District." In addition to that, to take item two off the table, 795 James Farm Road, modified petition of 500 North Ave LLC to change the zone of a portion of the property as shown on a site plan dated September 8th, 2016, completed by Rose Tissot and Company from an RS1 district to the proposed Joy Ridge Housing Development Opportunity Zone. And finally, item number three, the actual site plan of 795 James Farm Road, modified petition of 500 North Avenue LLC for the approval of a site plan under a proposed Section 28 of the zoning regulations in order to construct a 60-unit, 6-0, affordable housing development pursuant to State Statute Section E30G of State Statutes on the property located in the RS1 district.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vote 5-0. We have a discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair, just a couple procedural housekeeping points before we get into the meat and potatoes of the discussion. I think pursuant to what we've done the last time for the first round of petitions, and also if you remember 3044 Main Street, we've taken all these in one singular motion, and they were done by roll call on both times as well. So I think that would be appropriate to maintain consistency with that.
Any discussion? Do you want to go through the pros and cons, or do you want to? Does anybody have any questions on either of that, the denial or the approval?
I think we did a lot of work on modifying the approval and denial positions. So I think it would be probably the best way to go is to see if there's any last-minute suggestions or revisions to that, as opposed to go through each one line by line.
Okay. Does anybody have any additions or subtractions from the denial and the approval conditions?
No. Nope.
I had just a couple typographical things that I want to change in both letters. These were both drafts, but you know, the numbering on a couple of them, the formatting got a little messed up, so just fixing a couple of those things and...
Which ones, Jay?
Well, on the second page of the denial letter, the top reason for potential denial, that should be, the number should be number three, continuing to go on. One and two on the first page, and then for some reason it started counting number one over again on the second page.
Oh, that might have got word formatting, I take it?
Yeah, exactly. But nothing substantial.
Are these different than the ones you sent me that I added into the minutes?
These were the ones that were revised after our last administrative meeting.
You sent them to me and I added them to the minutes, so I have them.
Correct.
So there's 14, right?
Two other points that I just wanted, I know that it was the recollection of the commission that there was no evidence, no other evidence had been presented about the potential impacts other than the turtles and the ducks. We went back and I looked at all the evidence. The conservation administrator mentioned, both during the original presentation and during the revise, that regarding the change, the potential damages to the wetlands, I think that her comments, in fact, supported by the intervenor, soil scientist, and the engineer, they were, they all kind of went together. This was refuted in the testimony by the applicant. However, I kept flora and fauna and wetlands inside of the, I'll tell you, number 11 on the proposed denial, after confirming that those concerns were mentioned in the record. Number 11?
The new 11?
Yep, correct. The new 11 on the sample denial letter.
Poses a threat.
Via the verified pleading, the zoning commission has found that the proposed project is reasonably likely to have an impact and unreasonably injuring the public's interest in protecting the subject wetlands and the flora and fauna in these wetlands. I know that we had discussion about whether the wetlands were actually specifically stated. I have confirmed that they were stated.
Okay, that's number 13. The new 13. Now, I have it as number 12. I don't know, do I have a wrong?
Nope, should be number 11 on page two.
I had number 12, you have it number 13.
Well, I changed the numbers.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying. I see what you're saying. You've already changed the numbers.
I changed the numbers.
Understood.
Does everybody see that? That's an...
The second change that I made after some of our discussion that we had was about whether or not the intervenor, or the representative of the town, Attorney Kelly, actually mentioned specifically those that were not notified. After going back and looking at the testimony, Attorney Kelly stated, and I quote, "We have individuals that abut this property on Peters Lane, which includes the town of Stratford, that have not been notified. After discussing with Attorney Florick, we both feel that this is more than enough evidence to cite that lack of notice," which I have included in number, number one.
I have a question precisely to that. I'm glad it's also number one, because you know, we look at procedure first and substance second. Did we ever find out like the total number of adjoining properties to that 15-acre parcel?
The total number, no, I have not done the math.
But there is sufficient evidence, we think, that there were properties that weren't notified?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Do you know specifically which ones they were, or no?
They were along Peters Lane.
Peters Lane's a long road. Do we have any specific numbers, or no?
No.
No.
Does Peters Lane abut the 15 acres?
Yes.
But not the portion that's being zone change requested, correct? Not the four-point some odd acres that's identified?
Correct.
Right, thank you. Anything changed in the approval order, or no?
Nothing other than what I added after confirming in the testimony, that's it. And the recommended changes that were discussed during the last administrative session. If it would be helpful, I could certainly read through it, and we could look at each one again.
Attorney Florick, I have a question. So if the property is still 15 acres?
Yes.
And those people were not notified?
Yes.
Like, where does that leave us? I mean, is that...
Well, you, as I understand the evidence, after Jay and I looked at it, what Kevin Kelly did is he took the certificates of mailing that were presented to the commission, and he identified the people who had received the mailing and their address, and they were all on James Farm Road. Creating therefore the inference, the circumstantial inference, that nobody on Peters Lane or any other, on any other area was notified.
Needed to be, or needed to be?
Pardon me?
Or needed to be?
No.
Who made, okay.
Was not notified. If you find that as a fact, that, in my opinion, could certainly be a basis for denial of the application, because the abutting owners were not notified. But you have to find that to be a fact, you're the trier as a fact.
I have a question for Attorney Florick. So the list our attorney Kelly presented is based on a certified mailing, which is public document, public record?
It's part of the record, correct.
Yes, just want to make sure. So everything on that list is the definitive record of mailings that went out?
Yes.
For this particular property?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. That's, and do we know of any other streets that abut this? I know we talked about North Peters Lane and James Farm Road, or do we know of any other streets, like the, what's that road that actually goes into Roosevelt Forest?
I don't know that, Commissioner Fuller.
Peters Lane.
I don't have any more questions. I find that the, I'd be in favor of denial of this application, one because of the whole due process elaborated on, and point number one with the certified mailings, we have a definitive list of those who were mailing. And since it is 15 acres now, we have to take it as 15 acres before it becomes four and a half, or 4.6, or 4.7 acres. So from out the gate, there's a due process situation that's problematic here. Future applications and future petitions could rectify this situation, but with this particular petition, that is a problematic situation. It's already flawed procedurally right out of the gate. Number two, I do think there's a huge issue with the retaining wall. We heard testimony of 50-year storms, and we heard testimony saying it could only last up to a 10-year storm. I read more detailed into the opposition petition, and just because in rebuttal, they say they can do it, they didn't provide backup documentation that they could do it, and were taking someone at their word. So that's why I'm in favor of a denial. Thought I would make a motion to deny all three petitions in one motion.
I'll second that.
I guess we'll take a roll call, unless there's any more discussion?
There's always discussion of the motion. If we're going to do that, aren't we supposed to read in the entire document? So then I would suggest to the members of the commission who made the motion that they formally read the document into the record, rather than just make a generalized motion. So I would say the motion is out of order based at this point in time, because they did not complete it by going through the requirement of listing all the details regarding their specific motion.
Okay, I'll withdraw the motion and make a new one reading that into the record. I just need a document here. Thank you. Commissioner Drayon, I need you to withdraw the second as well.
I'll withdraw the second.
I'll make a new motion to deny the petition in a triplicate of the text amendment to zone change and the site plan of 795 James Farm Road in regards to this modified petition. At the, at this administrative session, which is November 21, 2016, the commission will vote, whether the vote passes or not, to, the motion on the table is to deny this petition, modified site plan of 500 North Ave LLC to amend the zoning regulation to create a new section, Section 28, entitled "The Joy Ridge Housing Opportunity Development Zone in an RS1 district." In addition to that, it's a joint motion to also deny the zone change, which is item number two, modified petition of 500 North Ave LLC to change the zone of a portion of the property as shown as a site plan dated September 8th, 2016, completed by Rose Tissot and Company from RS1 district to a proposed Joy Ridge Housing Opportunity Development Zone. And finally, the third item on this motion, which is the site plan, modified petition of 500 North Avenue LLC for approval of the site plan review under proposed Section 28 of the zoning regulations in order to construct 60-unit affordable housing development pursuant to Section E30-Gs of State Statutes on a property located in an RS1 district. The zoning commission, should opt to deny this, has found below that the public interest will be impacted in a detrimental manner in which cannot be protected by reasonable modifications in the proposed development. And the reasons for justification for denial are, number one, plans submitted were not incomplete, insufficient, and/or lack necessary detail for town engineer, public works, fire department, police department, and the police department to allow the zoning commission to make an informed decision. The applicant was unable to provide accurate information, we go on the actual size of the property, whether proper legal notice has been given to abutting property owners, and whether accurate deeds have been actually submitted into the town clerk's office. And then the second reason, based on testimony given by Attorney Kurt M. Wahlberg, subdivision approval was required and yet has yet to be given. Item number three is based on, based on the following comments, on the fire marshal, "The proposed project may compromise the well-being of a public interest as ice, snow, ice and snow has been potential and a dangerous impact to entry of the site plan due to the 10% rate of a slope through the driveway." Number four, proposed parcel was originally claimed to be approximately 3.7 acres, in a modified application, this claim has been, to be approximately 4.61 E3 acres in size. Neither prior, neither the prior nor the current proposed application has received the subdivision approval in order to create such a subject application. Item number five, as stated in testimony in original application, due to the fact that the parcel was not subdivided properly, the applicant did not properly notice all abutting property owners required by the zoning commission application in this process for the parcel of land of approximately 15 acres. Number six, as stated during testimony in original application, there appears to be some form of direct and indirect impact on the incidental wetlands located in the subject property, which is located in the 15 acres, in particular to the piebowl duck and eastern box turtle. Number seven, the property engineered, designed by, is done by insufficient for the retaining wall to the rear of the property for the following reasons. 7-A, perforation of the geometric fabric going against the manufacturer's recommendations for proper installation. 7-B, buildup of hydrostatic pressure behind the retaining wall could compromise the structural integrity of the retaining wall on that site. And 7-C, a failure of retaining wall will negatively impact the surrounding wetlands, ecosystems, and danger potential, not just wildlife, but residents on site. Reason number eight, based on testimony of Mr. Timothy J. Casey, which states the following. E3A, water ponding behind the retaining wall will, will for the buildup of pressure causing potential failure of the structure. E3B, preliminary test and boring should have been completed. And E3C, a 50-year storm compromise, a 50-year storm compromise would compromise the structural integrity of that wall. Reason number nine, as stated during testimony for the original application, preliminary geotechnical borings were not done to determine if not the soil and foundations will support the structural elements of the site, causing a severe public safety hazard. The applicant stated it will be unusual to conduct such a preliminary test boring. It should be mentioned that Rose Tissot and Company has stated they have done test borings on other applications that have involved small, that have involved a small, far smaller scope of work. Reason number 10, emergency apparatuses will be impeded in response times by James Farm Road when the sewer and water lines were to be installed and entrenched. Reason number 11, project poses a threat to contamination regarding all site work as required to the surrounding well water system in the surrounding areas. The project also poses a threat to the surrounding septic systems regarding site work. Reason number 12, proposed text amendment is arbitrary and capricious. Issue number 10, I mean, reason number 12, verified pleading, the zoning commission has found that the proposed project reasonably likely to have an impact and unreasonably injuring public's interest in protecting subject wetlands, flora, and fauna within the wetlands. The commission firmly ascertains that no such alternatives exist that can protect the public interest in protection of this natural resource involved that outweighs the public's interest need for affordable housing. And I believe there's one more, this would be number 14, I believe?
Mm-hmm.
14, reasonable, the responsible entity of administration and compliance, a state of affordability plan as identified as Joy Ridge Business Management Incorporated, is not registered or licensed with the Connecticut Secretary of State. And then it's just a closing, which is not really part of the motion. In addition to that, just personal comment, actually, I need a second on the motion before we have discussion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
We need discussion first.
He just signed out the motion. Mr. Fuller, I believe you have the floor.
Oh, yes, thank you, Commissioner Forrester. In addition to the reasons enumerated in the motion on the floor, I also feel, just to expand on a couple of them, I do think the due process situation is a critical issue on this, requiring that everyone has a right to know what's going on. It's, that's by local codes and by state codes. But in addition to elaborate further on the whole installation of sewer and public water utilities, I think it also is unfair to residents of that area. Should there be major sewer development, that might compel people in a septic system to go into a WPCA-like system when they didn't originally opt to go into one. This is like I buy a house that already has a sewer septic in it. So I think there's also an unfair burden that way that compels people to go into a sewer system that they may not want to go into. That said, I agree motions, reasons in the motions also satisfy my, a lot of my apprehension of this project. Is it better than the first site plan? Yes, I believe it is. I think a future site plan could quell some of these issues as well, but I don't think they've met the standard, and I wasn't convinced in rebuttal that they say they could doesn't mean that they will.
Well, with all due respect to my fellow commissioner, I do believe that, and I will be voting no on this motion, I do believe that reasonable modifications to the proposed development have been offered, and this commission also has the ability to do so as well. Particularly when we start talking about plans that submitted were incomplete, insufficient, they're not required by 830G. What's required by 830G is the basic type of plan that you have before you. It's been done before many times over. I do not believe if you compare these plans to the most recent affordable housing project that was approved by this commission and the previous members of the commission in the last term, that those plans are any more detailed than what you have before you. So I think that there's a lack of continuity with regards to holding one developer to one standard and one developer to another standard. I venture to say, I've looked at both plans, since the final approval had to come before the commission that I sat on, and I'd be hard-pressed to determine the difference in terms of detail and scope between the two plans. With all due respects, the terms of arbitrary and capricious, while they may sound nice, they have very little legal standing under 830G. I've read some case law on 830G, and you could say anything from spot zoning to any other type of terminology you wish to use, they don't hold up. So I mean, you may feel that, but we're governed by 830G. We're not governed by our emotions with regards to this plan. With regards to emergency services being delayed, as was pointed out by myself, as a matter of fact, in terms of discussion, that there is no indication that service was delayed to the area of Lordship when South Main Street was closed for an extensive period of time, which resulted in detours being necessary. There was no testimony that indicated that detours would be necessary in this area of James Farm Road, when and if sewers were going to be implemented. So I don't think it met that burden, and the town, granted, it's a state road that's South Main Street, but the town certainly made alternate plans, and I don't recall the town filing any type of motions or complaints with the state of Connecticut saying, "You can't redo 113, you can't move it, you can't shut it down." In fact, I believe the town's administration actually welcomed the fact that the flooding problem would be alleviated as a result of that. So I don't, I don't think in any of the testimony that I heard from the emergency services indicated beyond a shadow of a doubt, or beyond a reasonable doubt, that any delay would occur in providing emergency service. With regards to the slope, having volunteered for this town 29 years going on 30 years as an ambulance operator, there are some streets that the town of Stratford has, and has had for many, many, many years, or a century, I'm sure, that have a grade in slope that are 10% or greater. So the fact that we're talking about a driveway versus actual streets that fire apparatus during inclement weather do not detour necessarily around, in fact, we built a firehouse on top of a hill with a slope, Warner Hill Road that has a slope, I'm sorry, or in Oak Lane that has a slope that I believe to be equal to or greater than 10%. And I don't recall hearing fire trucks bottom out, coming down there, or going back up that hill. We talk about the wetlands and impacts therein. The petitioner did say that they would utilize the box turtle protocol as established by the state of Connecticut. They, of course, have not gone before wetlands in this commission could put in, as subject to any approval, that they seek the input or approval of wetlands prior, so that there is recourse there. But I don't recall hearing any testimony that specifically indicated that plant life would be damaged as a result of this project. And they've already dealt with the fact that the, at least to my satisfaction anyway, is that the animal wildlife that would be there would be protected based upon using the protocols that were in place by the state of Connecticut. The wall, I've heard so much about this wall. I drive by South River Road almost on a daily basis, and I look to my left and I see a wall. That wall's from the White Oaks Baptist Church, a wall that the zoning commission many, many, many years ago approved, probably with less stringent requirements and no test borings at that time, because that wall didn't exist all the time. That's, that's a wall. It has been through 100-year storms, it's been through sandy, it's been through pretty much the worst weather that you can have, and that wall didn't fail. And the recourse that the commission has is to require an outside engineer, subject to the approval of both the petitioner, the intervenor, and the town of Stratford, review the site plans and designs, so they're, they're not paid by the developer, they're not paid by the town of Stratford, and they're not paid by the intervenor. An independent engineer, licensed and credentialed, can review it and determine whether or not it doesn't meet criteria, and if it doesn't, the petitioner can be forced, based upon an approval process, that they have to adhere, if they so agree, to the requirement, they can always say, and walk away from it, but if there's a requirement put in an approval that says that you have to have an outside, third-party engineer licensed and certified review it, and review the hydraulic studies, and if they have any suggestions for design correction, that you have to do it. So once again, is there, does this commission have the ability to imply reasonable modifications? I think the answer is yes. A lot of the reasons that are listed in our denial are actually outside the scope of I'm not a fan of the legislation of 830G, but nonetheless, it's a governing body, it's the state of Connecticut that does it. We hear a lot of times people rant and rave about it, but I don't recall 830G being anything, any subject in the most recent state office campaigns that were here. So I guess we're not going to change it, so until we do, we're kind of governed to live by it. So I don't see, I don't see many of these things in the denial as subject to or covered by 830G. So I think that I would agree with Commissioner Fuller that the modified plan did go a long way compared to the original plan, but I also think that, as I stated, that the commission has the ability to come up with reasonable modifications. So for that reason, I think that, you know, that's the reason I'm going to vote against the denial. Thank you.
Commissioner Baker, do you have any questions? I just, you know, I agree with you, Commissioner Forrester, that a lot of the denial things have, have put us in a position where, you know, other places in town are the same, you know, have the same issues and whatever. But I really, my gut feeling is that this... But I really, my gut feeling is that this, that this property is 15 acres to start with, and we have got to go by the regulations, that those people were not notified. You know, they came to us the first time with, you know, three point something, and then they changed it to 4.6, and I just think that under that regulation, I'm going to vote denial. I'm going to go with that. But I do agree that, you know, they came back with, you know, with some changes that were, that were in our favor, and that were, you know, positive for the people around the neighborhood. There are some things that I still have an issue with, but I think the slope is, you know, you know, like you said, there are other places in town that have the same slope or whatever, but you know what? This is a new project, and we wanted to make it, we want it to be safe, we want it to be, you know, and I agree with the wall. I agree with you that, under those circumstances, when they get to build the wall, people are going to be in there and say, you need to do this, you need to support it with this, blah, blah, blah. I agree that. I would agree totally with that. But I just think the whole, it all begins with how big that property is, and I think we were, you know, misled to some degree. And if those are the regulations, if it's a 15-acre and there's no subdivision right now, then we have to, you know, in my opinion, we have to go by those regulations, and those people were not notified.
And I do appreciate your sentiment, I should say. In looking at the property, since the zone change is only applicable to those 4.6 acres, I could understand why the developer would only notify those that would be affected by the zone change. We'll let, if it goes to a court, we'll let the court figure out whether that's right or wrong. But when it comes back to this slope, I think we have to keep in mind that there was a single-family residence there, and the only access to that single-family residence was a sloped driveway. And that residence hasn't been there for 150 years, I don't believe. That residence has been there, and other residences along that road have been built within the last 50 years. Does that mean that if the developer came in with a single-family house, or a plot for the entire development of the 15-acre site, one-acre single-family houses, that we would deny it because the first one has a slope, that's too, the driveway has a slope that's too long? Because, once again, if we're saying that there's a public safety issue for multiple households, why wouldn't it be the same for one household? So are we saying the property is not usable in its present state? That's the question that I have.
Commissioner Fuller?
Thank you, Madam Chair. That's a hypothetical situation about a other proposed site plan for that site going to more consistent with what the RS1 zone is for that area. It could be different, because you have, instead of multiple buildings in a very short area, you have one single-family house on this acre, and then another one on that acre, as opposed to 60 units on three or four or whatever acres it might be. It does affect navigation of fire, of her apparatus on that site, so theoretically, it could be different. We don't know until you see such a site plan.
Jay, one quick question, too. Would the petitioner know, I mean, would he know that he had to notify everybody on the 15 acres? Do you think, I mean, I mean, I mean, if it was...
They know how big their, my answer to that would be, they know how large their property is. I don't think...
And if they didn't get a subdivision, if they got a subdivision...
Well, I'm not, I don't want to speak to the experience of the applicant.
Right.
In any application before the board, you have to notify the abutting property owners. Whether or not they knew that state statute, I don't know. I mean, I would find it hard to believe that they don't know that, since they did notify ones that affected where they were changing the zone, so I can't say with any certainty, but they knew to notify the people that were affected by that immediate four-acre property, so, you know, I don't want to make a conclusion that they intentionally did not notify other people. I don't know.
Madam Chair? Yeah, I would agree. We shouldn't question whether the motives are pure or impure, mistake, intentional, whatever, that there's no way for us to get inside somebody else's head. But isn't it true that the land record, when you go before planning or zoning, wetlands, BCA, whatever the board might be, that the land record tells you what the acreage is, what's on record of the town clerk's office? And it's right there, it's record. It's a public document.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner?
The one thing that would disturb me is that, at the beginning of a hearing, an applicant presents notices of mailing. And we went through the first round, and the applicant came back in with a modified. Why did it take so long to figure out? If, in fact, you have a 15-acre parcel, why did it take until the night of the deliberations and the second modification to say that there's a quote-unquote fatal flaw in the application? Why did it take so long? If we're saying that we know the size of the property to start with, why did it wait to the last minute? I just don't understand that. I mean, the town even hired an attorney to represent the town as an intervenor. Why did it take so long?
Well, but I think, over all the deliberations that we did discuss, we were torn between what size this property was. In the beginning, I know we were torn.
But it's right on the map.
Yeah.
And whether we're saying we're torn or not torn, we're now coming to a conclusion that everything's, you know, regardless, that this is the size...
I agree totally with you.
So I'm just not sure why we went through this exercise if, in fact, at the first night of the hearing, we could have said, hey, you don't have the right notice. And during the initial discussion prior to the modification, during the initial public testimony, if it was brought up by town, by attorney Kelly, why did it wait two months to be researched and verified? I don't get that, because the town expended funds on the modification challenge, the intervenors, I assume, expended funds on the modification challenge, and the applicant expended funds on the modification challenge. Wastefully, if, in fact, that's the situation with regards to the size of the property. So I...
Attorney Fuller, could I, could you, I mean, in a situation like this, it's really up to the commission, we're not experts here, we, you know, I mean...
It is up to the commission. I mean, again, you people are the fact-finders, so you have to cull through that voluminous amount of information that was provided to you, both verbally here and documentary. We're all going to have different memories. I mean, my memory was that this question of the area involved in this property was brought up right from the beginning. It was brought up by attorney Kelly, and the question of notice was brought up by attorney Kelly. It was brought up by attorney Cubic. However, my recollection is that it wasn't until the revisions were presented that they actually presented a title searcher, attorney Alberg, who testified that based on his title search, that it was still a 15-acre parcel because one cut had been made years ago, and when that, and that was only an acre cut, so that left now this huge parcel, and there was no such parcel in existence as a 4.6 parcel. So I don't think that information from an expert came out until the revisions. At least, that's my recollection of it. Prior to that, it was simply attorney Cubic stating it, and/or attorney Kelly stating that, you know, all the property owners adjacent to the tract of land had not been notified, but there didn't appear to me to be any affirmative evidence presented, other than attorney Kelly reading into the record the names of those parties who actually had received a certificate of mailing, and noting that all of those people had James Farm Road addresses, thereby circumstantially inferring that nobody else, who did not have a James Farm Road address and who was adjacent to this property had received notice. So that's my recollection of it.
I'll allow the other commissioners to have an opportunity to say something, but if not, I'll call the motion if they have nothing else to say.
I'm good. We've been thirty hours on this.
Call the motion.
You're calling a motion?
Calling the vote.
Calling the vote. Roll call.
Yeah, roll call.
Gavin, Commissioner.
Just a point of clarification before we pull the trigger on the vote. If you vote yes for denial, you're voting to deny. If you vote no, you're voting against denial, not necessarily for approval, but against the motion to deny.
So the motion on the table is to deny. Commissioner Forster?
No.
Commissioner Baker? Commissioner Juliano?
Deny it.
Commissioner Fuller?
Yes for denial.
Commissioner Peppin, yes for denial. Vote is three to two.
Four to one. Four to one. Four to deny, one not to deny. Deny, 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 deny.
Deny?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. Four to one, denial.
Seeing no other business, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody, for all your time.